On August 20th here, the applicant is 8:30 North Roselle Road doing business as QP. And can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Newell.
President.
Commissioner Gata.
Present.
Is the petitioner here, by any chance?
Mm-hmm.
Can you come up and identify yourself for the record, sir? Just identify, name and address for the record.
Okay, my name is Christos Kyriazis at 8:30 North, the address here, or my address?
Neither one's fine.
8:30 North Roselle at Hoffmann Estates.
Okay. Does anybody on the Liquor Commission have a question for the petitioner?
I just had one question.
Commissioner Newell.
About how many employees would you be having for this, rough guess?
About 10.
About 10?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Terrific. Thank you.
It's gonna be mostly family operated, but I got the seven of them.
It's a job.
Okay. Are there any questions from any members of the public on this? See none, the Chair would accept a motion to release a license to the petitioner?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? See none, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Newell.
Aye.
Commissioner Gata.
Aye.
Motion carried, Chair would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion is second, any discussion? See none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, the ayes have it, motion carried, we are adjourned. Committee meetings will start in about a little over three minutes.
President.
Trusty Gata.
Present.
Trusty Mills.
Present.
Trusty Stanton.
Present.
Trusty Arnett.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present.
I would like to recess to the board meeting. Could I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to recess to the board meeting, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Ayes have it, we are recessed. The purpose of this is to do the swearing-ins and the presentation and the proclamations, so the rest of you folks can all go home and we'll deal with our six committee meetings and our board meeting. I'd also like to announce, just for the record, that this meeting is being telecast live and will be shown over our cable channel during the week also. Can you, like to call us meeting to order, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trusty Gata.
Present.
Trusty Arnett.
Present.
Trusty Mills.
Present.
Trusty Newell.
Present.
Trusty Palapis.
Present.
Trusty Stanton.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present. Can everybody please rise? Trusty Gata, you want to listen to the pledge?
Our liberties to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trusty Gata, we'll move on to President's Report. We have one presentation, that's for Riley Johnson, who won the 7th and 8th grade division, awarded by the Library of Congress for a letter that she wrote. Is some of the audience gonna speak to us about this? I knew you'd come through. Little arm bending. Yeah. Just identify yourself for the record.
I'm Monica Kim. Out of nearly 47,000 students who entered into the Library of Congress Letters about literature writing contest, Riley Johnson won first place for state, and then she placed first nationally.
Wow.
And she is now in 8th grade, she did this in 7th grade in Eisenhower. She's now an 8th grader at Eisenhower Junior High, and we, her family, her extended family, knew that she was a very special girl, and now everyone can see that she is as special as we all know she is.
Should Riley come up, members of her family?
No.
Riley, welcome. That's quite an amazing accomplishment, 47,000, wow. Is that your dad with you?
Yes.
And you're just, you're just your dad to everybody?
Hmm?
He's got a name other than Dad, right?
Oh, yes. Um, this is my dad, his name is Alonso.
Welcome, Alonso.
Thank you.
Well, we're very, very impressed by your accomplishment, Riley. Do you have something that you're gonna read for us?
Yes, I have my letter. Dear Gabrielle Zevin, I read your book for an assignment in school. My teacher meant for us to learn a lesson, write a paragraph, and move on, but my mind is still in Elsewhere. When Liz wakes up and finds herself on a boat, she is told by a strange man she was hit by a car and died. He said that they were taking her to a place called Elsewhere. Once they arrived, she would begin to age backwards until all her memories were lost. As a baby, Liz would be sent back to Earth to live a new life, a life that wasn't hers. He said her life was taken by a yellow taxi and she could never go back. Liz couldn't believe her life was over. Looking back on her life, she realized how precious it had been and how much time she'd wasted. I could relate to Liz because I knew what it was like to complain and cry about things that wouldn't matter in the next hour. Being a kid makes you want what you want when you want it, but that view clouded all the wonderful things I needed to be grateful for. Yet the lesson people learn time and time again tends to be realized too late. One night, my siblings and parents were in the living room watching our favorite show. A commercial came on, so I got up to make cookies in the kitchen. Then my older sister, Sydney, started whispering, "Mom, mom?" No answer. I looked over to see my dad standing over a shaking body. I'm calling 911. She had had an aneurysm and wasn't waking up. I spent those few days in the hospital listing all the things I did wrong and what I would change when she woke up. She never did. My mom was very outgoing and succeeded in making friends with pretty much everyone she met. The hospital was filled with people I knew, people I pretended to know, and extended family. Being only 11, everyone smothered me with questions and somber nods. Whenever somebody asked me how I was feeling, I smiled and said, "If this was her time, then it was her time." It wasn't until she was in a casket that I realized it really was her time. I was kind of playing the part of strong accepting without expecting her to really die. There was no way I was supposed to really grow up without a mom. I spoke at her funeral and put on a smile. I told all the concerned family friends, "If it was her time, then it was her time." I fooled myself into pretending things were just fine. Unlike Liz, my first response was to be okay. Everyone deals with death and gets through it. I can too, right? Before I knew it, junior high was about to begin. Even though I didn't say it, 7th grade seemed pretty scary. I expected more teachers and a locker, but now I had to get through it on my own. But when I read your book, life got brighter. Liz tortured herself by going to the observation decks to see her old life every day. She sat there, watching her best friend being happy without her. She watched everyone move on, everyone except Liz. I didn't want that to happen to me. I didn't want to become a ghost person living in the past. For my birthday, a few weeks later, I got a little book of positive quotes. It inspired me to write one thing I was thankful for every day. Not the typical things like family and friends, but things like clean water and good teachers. My dad tried putting me in different support groups that I saw no need for. After deciding I wasn't totally fine, we went to one-on-one therapy sessions that helped me a lot, but only because I was willing to work for it. One thing that really stuck with me was your theme of acceptance. Liz took some time learning how to move on from the life she used to know. She became obsessed with the observation decks where she could see her friends and family back on Earth. She was stuck. Thandi, her roommate, had no problem at all. From the start, she said there was no point in being sad at what she couldn't change. I read that wishing my heart could catch up like Thandi's did in two pages. But everyone takes their own time to keep their mind and soul in sync. Knowing that my mom wasn't coming back home was difficult to even imagine. I had to accept that life would go on without her, but only if I moved on. You wrote, "Death is a state of mind. Many people on Earth spend their lives, spend their entire lives dead. I wanted to live my life and not wait for it to be over. December 16th will mark one year since my mom's death. Just like Liz aged backward in your book, my mom would be one year younger and one year closer to home. Thank you for a world where my mother can see me writing this letter from the observation deck. Thank you for the idea that once I leave this world, I will return. Thank you for the lessons I couldn't live without and the book I won't forget. With heart, Riley Johnson, Grade 7."
The Village of Hoffmann Estates is proud to present the certificate of achievement to Riley Paige Johnson, a Monday, August 20th, 2018. In recognition of your determination and courage to live life to the fullest despite being faced with unimaginable loss, thank you for sharing with the world your journey of grief, hope, and healing. The eloquence of your writing, as recognized by the prestigious Library of Congress, gently reminds us that life can and does move on in beautiful and unexpected ways. Wish you the best of luck as you continue on your life's journey. Want to come up and? We have our rituals. If you can, two can both come up here, we'll get a picture.
You're not done yet. You might have thought, but no. Go, one, two, three. One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three.
Thank you. Move on to the swearing's end. Chief Fortunato, do you have some business to conduct here?
Chief Mayor Ford, I would like to introduce Firefighter Bob Orr and Firefighter Brian Campbell to be supported to the office of the Village of Hoffmann Estates.
Back in business?
Back in business.
Okay. Bobby, you want to introduce everybody here?
Sure. My wife Amy, my daughter Emma, and my daughter Ava.
Welcome. This is a great night, and we're very excited to have the promotions going on this evening. Looks like you brought a few of your closest friends with you. Okay, well, let's get down to business here. I, Robert Orr.
I, Robert Orr.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the office of Lieutenant.
To the office of Lieutenant.
In the Village of Hoffmann Estates.
In the Village of Hoffmann Estates.
In the County of Cook and Kane.
In the County of Cook and Kane.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the State of Illinois.
Of the State of Illinois.
I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Lieutenant.
Of Lieutenant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Lieutenant. I have this beautiful badge here that says Lieutenant. Who's going to do the honors?
I go.
Plenty of paramedics there, so don't worry if you... Congratulations to you. You got a picture, Bob? Come on, everybody. Go for a picture.
She just doesn't want to be me.
Okay. Wait a minute. Hi Bill, I'm getting friendly with you. Here we go, everybody, one, two, three. Maybe not, there we go. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Thank you.
Here, next will be Firefighter Brian Campbell.
Right, Bob, bring me up. Want to introduce your family, Brian?
This is my wife Jen, my son Derek, and my daughter Rachel.
Welcome. This is a big day for all four of you. Exactly. Okay. Hi, Brian Campbell.
Hi, Brian Campbell.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the office of Lieutenant.
To the office of Lieutenant.
The Village of Hoffmann Estates.
Village of Hoffmann Estates.
The County of Cook and Kane.
County of Cook and Kane.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the State of Illinois.
Of the State of Illinois.
I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Lieutenant.
Of Lieutenant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Have another beautiful badge that says Lieutenant. Excellent. Great job. Well, let's get a picture here.
Way off the seals, watch your eyes.
Okay.
We're centering.
We're off-center or the seal's off-center?
Yeah, it's a seal, not us.
I'm off-center, yeah.
Here we go. One, two, three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Yeah, we want to hold him, send him Friday.
Brian.
Hey, Bob, can you come on up? Bob, come on up. Shall we get the two of them? Yeah. Yeah, can we get some of the brass down up here, too?
How about that one?
They resemble everybody.
All right, here we go. One, two, three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Excellent. Okay, I think that the police chief has some official business to do here, chief. Is the mic working? I think you're too tall, chief. It's not on.
Mayor, Village Board, Police Department is honored to bring before you Timothy Kubat to be sworn in as a probationary police officer.
Okay.
Want to come up with your pen?
Timothy, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Who'd you bring with you?
My wife, Marta.
Welcome, Marta.
Hello.
Welcome. This is a big day for the two of you. It's a big day for the Police Department, too. Hi, Timothy Kubat.
Hi, Timothy Kubat.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the office of?
To the office of?
Probationary police officer.
Probationary police officer.
In the Village of Hoffmann Estates.
The Village of Hoffmann Estates.
The County of Cook and Kane.
The County of Cook and Kane.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the State of Illinois.
Of the State of Illinois.
I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of probationary police officer.
Of probationary police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Got a real nice badge here, chief. Somebody gonna pin that on him? Excellent job, congratulations. Yeah, you get in there too, Marta, come on.
All right, here we go. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Hold on a second, we can't forget the police chiefs, chiefs, chiefses. Marta, you stay here, stay here. We have to adjust.
Ted's too tall. All right, everybody, all right, hold still. Ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Great, thank you.
Okay, we'll do the proclamations, then we'll go back to the committee meetings. Who has the first one?
I do. Officer of the Mayor proclamation, whereas exemplary public service employment is of vital importance in assuring provision of services directed toward the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of any community, and whereas a general government department, cable TV, has upon its roster an individual who should be commended for assisting said department in faithfully serving the citizens of this community, and whereas length of service coupled with continued training and positive attitude toward assigned job tasks make a profile of this dedicated employee, and whereas the Village of Hoffmann Estates, on behalf of its citizens' desires to acknowledge its indebtedness and gratitude for 30 years of dedication and proficiency in the aforementioned department, be it therefore resolved that William D. McLeod, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and laws of this Village of Hoffmann Estates hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 21st, 2018, as Bruce Anderson Day, and the Village of Hoffmann Estates and urge all employees and citizens of the Village to join us in expressing gratitude and appreciation to this employee who may have assisted them with outstanding service.
Chair will accept a motion. So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Bruce has done a great job for us. I remember when he was hired as a part-time cable TV coordinator, and he's done a great job. He really built Channel 6, so he can even make me look good when he's doing some taping. Want to say a few words, Bruce?
Thank you, Mayor. It's unbelievable how fast 30 years goes here at the Village, and I have been blessed to have been able to remain here for all that time and to work with the people of the Village, and I've enjoyed every minute of it.
We're very lucky to have you.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, the ayes have it, motion carried. Bruce is actually in the control box, makes sure this meeting gets recorded and shown live. It's always working.
And now he's the subject.
Yep.
All right, here we go. One, two, three. One more, please. One, two, three. Great.
Great. Okay, who's next?
I am. Officer of the Mayor proclamation, whereas exemplary public service employment is of vital importance in assuring provision and service dedicated toward the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of any community, and whereas the fire department has upon its roster an individual who should be commended for assisting said department in faithfully serving the citizens of this community, and whereas length of service coupled with continued training and positive attitude toward assigned job tasks makes a profile of this dedicated employee, and whereas the Village of Hoffmann Estates, on behalf of its citizens' desires to acknowledge its indebtedness and gratitude for 30 years of dedication and proficiency in the aforementioned department, be it therefore resolved that William D. McLeod, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and the laws of this Village of Hoffmann Estates, hereby proclaim Sunday, August 26th, 2018, as Jay Martino Day, and the Village of Hoffmann Estates and urge all employees and citizens of the Village to join us in expressing gratitude, appreciation, to this employee who may have assisted them with outstanding service.
Chair will accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Jay's done a great job for us, and wow, 30 years. His parents ran the Ace Hardware Store up on the north side back in the day. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, the ayes have it, motion carried. Chief, will you give this to Jay with our thanks? Okay, who's next?
Officer of the Mayor proclamation, whereas exemplary public service employment is of vital importance in assuring provision of services directed toward the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of any community, and whereas the general government department has upon its roster an individual who should be commended for assisting said department in faithfully serving the citizens of this community, and whereas length of service coupled with continued training and positive attitude toward assigned job tasks make a profile of this dedicated employee, and whereas the Village of Hoffmann Estates, on behalf of its citizens' desires to acknowledge its indebtedness and gratitude for 20 years of dedication and proficiency in the aforementioned department, be it therefore resolved that William D. McLeod, acting under and by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and laws of this Village of Hoffmann Estates, hereby proclaims Tuesday, August 21st, 2018, as Daniel O'Malley Day, and the Village of Hoffmann Estates and urges all employees and citizens of the Village to join us in expressing gratitude and appreciation to this employee who may have assisted them with outstanding service.
Chair will accept a motion.
So moved.
Second. Dan has done an extraordinary job for us. He does a lot of the heavy lifting, union negotiations, redoing the building, whatever. It's the toughest job out there. Seems Mr. Norris always assigns that to Mr. O'Malley, but we appreciate the great job he's done. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, the ayes have it, motion carried. Whatever it takes.
Are we still too far over, Beverly?
Ready, we go. One, two, three.
Make sure he gets his good side.
One, two, three. Just gonna take a few, just kidding. One, two, three, and one more. One, two.
Wow, you're a boy.
And I believe we have one more proclamation. Who's got that one?
Yes, we do.
I get the last one. Okay, so Officer of the Mayor proclamation, whereas the Village of Hoffmann Estates and its commission for senior citizens are committed to helping all individuals maintain their health and independence... health and independence later in life, and whereas our senior citizens in the Village strengthen our community by having an important role in sharing knowledge, wisdom, and understanding of the history of our community through interactions with children, youth, and adults from other generations, and whereas our senior citizens' experience and wisdom connect us to the past and help us meet the challenges of the present, and whereas from interactions with family, friends, and neighbors to involvement in commissions and volunteering, our senior citizens enrich the lives of everyone in our community, and whereas our community provides opportunities to enrich citizens of all ages through the following: emphasizing the value of including older adults in public and family life, creating opportunities for older residents to interact with people of different cultures and generations through our village commissions and programs, and providing services, technologies, and support systems that allow older adults to participate in social activities in the community such as Commission for Senior Citizens activities, various commission activities, health and human services programs, and coffee with the board, and whereas as a village, we continue to show our support and appreciation for our treasured senior citizens who have contributed so much to our community, be it therefore resolved that William D. McLeod, acting under and by the virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution of the State of Illinois and the laws of this Village of Hoffman Estates, hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 21st, 2018, as National Senior Appreciation Day, in the Village of Hoffman Estates, and urge all Hoffman Estates residents and businesses to take time on this day to engage with our excellent senior citizens.
Chair will accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
The Village really does appreciate the great contributions that our senior citizens make, and we appreciate the great job our senior citizens' commission does, I think the majority of them are here in the audience right now to accept this proclamation, but thank you for everything. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have a motion carried, come on, Lilly and everybody, come on up. Here, we gotta get a picture. In the middle.
Squeeze in, Franz, move over. Nice and balanced.
All right, everybody ready? Here we go, one, two, three. One more, one, two, three. Just one more, one, two, three. Great.
Thank you.
Chair would accept a motion to recess this board meeting to be started or resumed when all the committee meetings are concluded.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have a motion carried, we are recessed.
I'd like to call back to order the Finance Committee for this night, August 20, 2018.
Chairman Ploffis.
Sorry, yes, go ahead.
Chairman Ploffis.
President.
Trustee Noel.
Present.
Trustee Gata.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present.
Thank you, our roll call reestablishes quorum. Can I get a motion and a second to approve the minutes of July 16, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, any questions, comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Attention, ayes have it, motion carries. Under new business, we have two items, the first is a request approval of the FY 2018 mid-year financial review and to move forward with the following unbudgeted projects: A, Fire Department Large Diameter Hose, and B, Installation of a Generator at the Sears Center Arena.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, any questions or comments about the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Item number two is a request approval of a five-year extension to the agreement with Andy Frane of Aurora, Illinois, for A, Security Usurers Guest Services at the Sears Center Arena, B, Event Parking Services at the Sears Center Arena.
So moved.
Second.
A motion to second, any questions, comments?
No, it's our provider for the last, gee, since 2011, so just renewing, we did have to update rates given the increase in the minimum wage around the region, so it will cost us more, but more than likely we'll get a higher caliber of candidates when we hire, so it's all positive.
Standing. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, thanks guys. Reports, which are information only, the first is the Finance Department Monthly Report. Could it be noted that this report has been received? Item number two is the Information Systems Department Monthly Report. Any questions or comments? Please let it be noted that this report has been received and filed. And item number three is the Sears Center Monthly Report. Any questions, comments? You sat down too early.
I got a question.
You wore your Bull shirt, so you gotta...
I'm ready to go, let's do it.
Trustee Stanton.
You're dating this back here, Ben, you've got the 9/13/17 on the glory of kickboxing, and on Ken Craft, you've got 12/28/17, and 12/29/17, and 12/30/17. So I'm assuming it's a typo.
It was a good year, though, I like to, no, we will update that, my apologies.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments, any other updates you wanna?
Went into the summer way ahead of budget, so hopefully we continue that, September 1, we have All In, it is pacing to be the largest attendance, largest paid attendance and attendance we've ever had at 11,500 maybe, it depends how many people use suite tickets, so it is currently the largest independent wrestling event ever, that being said, this same group just went on sale at Madison Square Garden, sold out, so we'll have that title for about 45 minutes. But, yes, but obviously, great news, great result, I believe it's sold out in 38 minutes, so should be fun, and we were doing a pre-party out front, starting at 11 a.m., doors are at 3, but should be good.
It's great, Hulk Hogan's not even there.
Do not believe Hulk Hogan, Macaulay Culkin might be there, I don't know why.
All right.
True story.
There you go. Any questions or comments? Let it be noted that the Sears Center Monthly Report has been received and filed. President's report, anything, sir?
I'll wait for the board meeting.
Thank you. Nothing in other to approach this committee, no items in review, and could I have a motion and a second to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, thank you.
I would like to call the Public Work and Utility Committee to order for August 20th, may I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Noel.
Present.
Vice Chairman Gata.
Present.
Trustee Ploffis.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present.
Okay, we have a quorum, first thing that we are going to have is the approval of minutes from July 16, 2018.
So moved.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any changes, corrections, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Note the one abstention. Motion approved for the minutes of July 16, also the approval of minutes for August 6, 2018, which was a special meeting.
So moved.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, do we have any, let's see, corrections, nothing, seeing, all in favor?
Aye.
Non-nays, motion passed. Under new business, I have three items, first one is request authorization to extend 2017 contract for 2018 contracted branch brush pickup program to Trees R Us Incorporated out of Wakanda, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed $30,000.
So moved.
A second.
No motion and a second, any questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Non-nays, motion passed. Item number two, request authorization toward contract for the 2018 Drainage Improvements Project to Prime Construction Incorporated out of Hampshire, Illinois, which was the low bid in an amount of $78,860.
So moved.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, any questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Non-nays, motion passed. Item number three, request authorization toward contract for the Oakmont Road Storm Sewer Replacement Project to ALAMP Concrete Contractors Incorporated of Schaumburg, Illinois, which was the low bid in an amount of $554,387.
So moved.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, any questions, anything to add? Seeing nothing, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Non-nays, motion passed. The following are reports for, pardon me? It is? Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Big story.
I was like, what in the world? Okay. It's all Joe's fault, anyway, but anyway, reports for information only, number one is the Department of Public Works Monthly Report, we have it received and request to have it filed, and number two is Department of Development Services Monthly Engineering Report of the Transportation and Engineering Division, it has been received and will be filed. I'm not sure where I should put this, but I just had a question, how did the weekend go with the big recycle, can you tell us anything, or do you still have to get stuff together?
Sure, we did get some preliminary numbers, the event, we had great weather for it, the event went very well, I kept getting reports from Kevin, who is the supervisor onsite there, we had a total of 829 vehicles that went through, so we're kind of close to where we were last year, and then the estimate, we'll get, we'll get the final numbers for everything in another week or two, once they've weighed it and taken it to the various places for recycling, but the initial estimate is 45,000 pounds of electronics were, were taken. I know they had two full trucks, both the trucks for document destruction were totally full, and they sent those, those back, and we also had 1,800 pounds of batteries, so, you know, continues to be a very popular event, we told a lot of people to show up early, and they did. We, we actually were able, all the vendors showed up, we were able to open a little bit early, we had 100 cars through before 9 o'clock even, so the event continues to do very well and be very popular.
It was a great event, I was gonna comment on it later, but thank you to everyone that worked it, like Public Works, some staff that is sitting out there, they worked, also to the trustees here, like Gata and Arnett, who both sweated out there also, but it was a good event, and it's just so nice to see that everybody brings all the stuff that gets recycled and it's not going to a landfill, so thank you, Public Works, anybody that worked that, and the residents for stopping and bringing all the stuff to be recycled, so thank you, everyone. President's report, sir?
I'll wait for the board meeting, Madam Chair.
Nothing under other or items in review, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Non-nays, we are adjourned.
And I would like to call the Meeting of Public Health and Service Safety Committee on August 20, 2018, may I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Gata.
Present.
Vice Chairman Ploffis.
Present.
Trustee Noel.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present.
Okay, thank you, and we have a quorum, approval of minutes of July 16, 2018.
So moved.
A second.
Have a motion and a second, any corrections, deletions, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
I'm sorry?
I'm abstaining.
Oh, one abstention. Okay, under, nothing under our new business, under reports, information only, number one is the Police Department Monthly Report, anything up here? Chief, anything to add? Okay, filed, received and filed, and number two, Health and Services Monthly Report, nothing here, Dr. Sabit, nothing, okay, and that is received and filed, number three is Emergency Management Coordinator Monthly Report, it's received and filed, and then the Fire Department Monthly Report, chief, nothing to add, anything up here, seeing nothing, received and filed, President's report?
I'll wait for the board meeting, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, nothing in other, items in review, and looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, we are adjourned, thank you.
I'd like to call to order the Special Transportation and Road Improvement Committee for August 20, 2018, the Secretary, please call the roll.
Chairman Mills.
Present.
Vice Chairman Stanton.
Present.
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Trustee Noel.
Present.
Trustee Ploffis.
Present.
Trustee Gata.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present.
We have, thank you, we have a quorum, and we have one item this evening under old business, discussion of Steeple Hill Fence and Gate near Alcoa Lane and Washington Boulevard. I did receive one letter in the packet that has been asked to be included into it, do you want me to read that first, or did you want to give any recap first, Mr. Gugliotta?
No, you can read the letter, if you want.
Okay, this letter is from Scott Ewing, reference the August 20 committee meeting parking permit program and Steeple Hill Fence, Dear Director Hanky, thank you for asking Director Gugliotta to return my phone call to you this morning pursuant, and this is dated August 10, pursuant to my phone conversation on August 9, 2018 with Director Gugliotta, I will be out of town on the date of the upcoming meeting, I am requesting that you ensure that the following items are shared with the committee and that my concerns be included in the minutes of the meeting. Parking Permit Program, point one, in general, the program has had an overall positive impact on the issues and concerns discussed at the prior committee meetings excluding the intersections of Alcoa Lane and Washington Street and the dead end at Washington. Two, unfortunately, parking by non-residents slash without permits continues to be a problem, specifically at and around the intersection of Alcoa Lane and Washington Street, in my opinion, this problem exists only because of the gate at the end of Washington Street. If the gate was not conveniently there, Steeple Hill occupants would not attempt to park illegally in this area. Next point, the patrol and enforcement of the permit parking in the Alcoa Lane and Washington Street area has been spotty and often requires a call from myself or one of my family members to the Hoffman Estates Police Department to have tickets or towing notices issued, police records should bear this out, as long as the gate continues to exist, I am requesting that the Hoffman Estates Police Department to check this area after 12:00 midnight daily to ensure consistent enforcement. On next thing is vandalism graffiti and littering, point, trash graffiti and littering continue to be a problem at, at and around the gate at the end of Washington Street. I believe that you are aware of this issue and that Hoffman Estates Public Works employees have been sent to clean up this area a number of times, neighbors have also cleaned up after those using the gate, once again, if there were no gate, there would be no problems. Next point, the fence and gate have been kicked out and destroyed numerous times, both before and after the fence was recently replaced, police code and transportation records will bear this out, over time, in my opinion, if the fence gate was closed off, these issues would resolve themselves. In summary, I am requesting Mr. Norris and the committee to support the residents of Alcoa Lane and Washington Street and reclose the gate, please remember that this was the position of the Village for over 25-plus years, the gate continues to have unintended consequences, thank you for your consideration, sincerely, Scott A. Ewing. Okay, Mr. Gugliotta, would you like to give us an update on all of this now?
Sure, just a quick summary, this item was last discussed by the committee in, I believe, March, and at that time, the new, newly enacted parking permit program had just been put into place, I think it was around April, by the end of April, the signs had all been posted, and the police department was fully enforcing the new regulations, obviously starting with educational efforts first, and then ultimately issuing citations throughout the summer, there have been a total of 57 citations issued based on the end of July records, average of about three to four per week.
There have been a total of fifty-seven citations issued, based on the end of July records. It's averaged about three to four per week after the initial kind of bump in the beginning. There are a few owners who've received multiple citations, and some of these have kind of been spread throughout the subdivision. There was a abandoned vehicle issue in the subdivision that ultimately got resolved by the owner moving it. And, the police do continue to enforce. Obviously, they respond to complaints when, when things are noted, but they're also keeping an eye on it proactively as well. The Steeple Hill Fence area, the fence, number of issues had come up. In addition to the gate, one of them had been the condition of the fence itself, which is aging. Over the course of the summer, the association invested a lot of time and money in replacing all of the panels of the entire fence. They also took the time to clear out a lot of scrub trees and bushes that had grown between their fence and the neighbor's fence, cleaned up a lot of garbage, and really improved the appearance of the area. At this time, the entire fence has been repaired or replaced. The gate itself has a, now has a heavy-duty spring, spring on it that makes itself closing. So people who do pass through it, the gate remains closed at all times. And actually, the, the association has actually been the one that's cleaned up quite a number of times on the property, not the village. The village did do some cleanup work at the end of Washington, in the public right-of-way. But otherwise, it's been the association that had done a lot of the cleanup work. So we have been monitoring it. Code enforcement has been monitoring the situation all summer very closely. And, we have not, other than the one instance of graffiti, which was rectified immediately by the association, as well as some paint that had been marked on traffic signs by Public Works, they clean that up. But other than that, the fence itself is in good condition, and we have not really witnessed any extensive damage to the fence with the gate in place. The other issue that has come up is the presence of the gate itself and the opening, which leads from the apartment or condominium property to the public right-of-way, as was presented in the spring at the committee meeting. Legal counsel for the village has indicated that there is no legal basis to require Steeple Hill to remove the gate. A gate is a very typical, normal part of a fence. The fence has to be present, but it can have a gate. And therefore, access does, does remain to the public street at the end of Washington Boulevard. So any other type of screening or barricading or blocking that the village would want to do would have to occur within the village right-of-way. And there are unfortunately some problems with trying to do something like that, because the right-of-way is only, you know, sixty-six feet wide, and, and people could real easily walk around the end of it, onto the adjacent lots, and, and get where they're trying to go. So, effectively, there's not really a practical way to install a, a real effective barrier. So we're back, as requested by the committee, just to provide this update and overview, and answer any questions that you have.
Okay, questions up here? Comments? Trustee Plafis.
I think it's admirable that the condominium association has done some-
We'll get to the audience in just a minute, okay? Thank you.
Has done some work and cleanup, but I think that's really part of what they should have been doing all along. So as, you know, as we hand out kudos, I think that's part of what the people in that area are paying for, in terms of that service. And I'm still of the opinion that we should get rid of the gate. I think that the public right-of-way technically ends at nine ninety-five, at the driveway there, for nine ninety-five and nine ninety to access Alcoa and, and Washington, and doesn't imply that, you know, it could go straight through. So, I know what our legal opinion is, but I think it's an opinion that others might agree or disagree with. So that's just from my perspective, what I'd like to see.
Okay. Anyone else up here? Okay, yes, Mr. Norris.
Just to reply a little bit to Trustee Plafis, the right-of-way is actually platted. So our right-of-way, we know, and you can actually see it on the map, it's in the packet, it goes all the way to the property line. Just shy of the property line. So our property runs to the Steeple Hill property line. So, we can put something up there, as Mr. Gugliotta mentioned, but they could, there's, they could still have a margin enough to try to move around through it, and then they could potentially be trespassing on nine ninety or nine ninety-five, but that raises a whole series of other issues. I'm just trying to provide facts.
No, I understand your perspective. Maybe we need to replant. And, you know, and our access at the end of the north side of nine ninety-five's driveway. And then from there, it takes us out of the loophole of it being a right-of-way. And the gate goes away, and everybody's happy.
But then who maintains that section?
Except the Steeple Hill people are not happy.
Well, that's, you know, access that's debatable in terms of whether it's needed or not. But, the fence is maintained by the association, all of the fence, without the gate. Again, just my perspective, but we have to remove about fifteen feet of road, and it ends at the north side of nine ninety-five's driveway, and then it's no longer a, a right-of-way. Or an access to.
So there's a whole process involved. The corporation council can speak to it. If the committee were to choose that, and that's obviously a committee decision, the village has to go through what's called a vacation process, to vacate right-of-way. We'd have to survey what portion of the right-of-way we'd like to give away. Obviously, it has to go past the driveways, because we can't take away their access. And then you have to get appraisals done on the portion to be vacated, and then you have to go to the adjoining property owners to see if they want it. They may or may not want it. I've seen situations where people said, no, I don't want it, I'm not gonna pay additional taxes on land that I legitimately can't do anything with. But that is something the committee can choose to ask staff to investigate and talk to those homeowners. The only caution I would like to give to the committee is that we did meet with the Steeple Association Board. They are also property owners and residents of the village. And what staff has been trying to do is try and find a balance between owners on one side of the fence, and owners, and property owners and taxpayers on the other side of the fence. And their desire is to keep the gate. And we appreciate that the village is very much in the middle, because we actually feel like we're in the middle too. But that is the vacation process, and then those owners, after the property are vacated, would have the right to decide if they together wanted to put up some type of fence.
And I appreciate the village's and your staff's diplomacy. I really do. I mean that. And of course, they want to keep the gate, because it's, you know, secondary parking for their, their residents. So-
No. No, that's his opinion. Yeah, all right. We will be, are you finished?
Yep.
Okay. All right, now, if there's some questions, if you'd like to come up and address the board, I do need to have your name and address for the record, please. No, on the microphone, please.
I live on Alcoa, four five zero, Leslie Gale. Okay, what's the purpose? The purpose is so they can park over there in the residential area?
That was not the purpose.
There is no purpose for that gate.
They indicate that the purpose for the gate is that there are occasions, this is what they tell us, where a kid will miss a bus, parents work, and the kids have to walk to school or get to school.
What's the percentage of, of time that's gonna happen? One in a million? One in a thousand?
We don't know.
But for one person versus all the residential people, it doesn't make sense. It's not logical. It's not. For one person, by chance, they're gonna be late for school, so their mother calls them in for being tardy, or they get a neighbor. There's other alternatives, versus someone walking over there and parking constantly. That one house is up for sale. No one's gonna buy that house. You drive by and you see all these cars. But what the heck? And then also, you know, in the police department, they allow that big landscaping truck. There's like two trailers to park there. Why don't you allow the Steeple Hill people to park in their police department?
We have on occasion. Somebody said that they can legally park anywhere. We've said-
Well, why don't you? Why don't you go to Steeple Hill and say that now that monstrous parking lot is now open for their residents to park? Get them off the street of Spring Mill, and get them off over there on Washington. Get them out of our neighborhood. You've got that police department. And then also, you put the police department right next to the residential, and I live right behind the police department. So that's a whole nother issue. I know Don, and probably that police chief also.
The microphone, please.
Yeah, I know those two guys, 'cause I have them, their phone numbers in my, on my, in my phone. So, there is issues. Alcoa is the, the street of hell. We had graffiti. The guy next door had graffiti. He has a young child there. I saw some blacks running around, 'cause they think it's so cool now that the gate is open. So I had to confront them. I'm gonna give them the stare-down. I'm not afraid of blacks. I says, why are you wearing a backpack on Sunday? I says, no school. Oh, we got stuff in the backpack. And then we watched them go through the gate. So it's called loitering. So there is issues here. It's loitering, and what's the purpose? For one person versus all the thousands of people that live in that area? And then, if you open up that parking lot, then those people are not gonna be in Spring Mill, where I have to like squeeze through after a certain hour when they're all lined up, coming from Steeple Hill. So it's our issue, but now you're favorite, favoring Steeple Hill. Whatever Steeple Hill wants, oh, yeah, 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 Steeple Hill gets. Well, I don't think so. No, there's more of us that are being annoyed, and our privacy is taken away, and our safety. I don't really wanna see little black kids running around. Sorry.
Thank you.
And also, I'd like to have some research done on how many apartment complexes have a gate, an open gate, that separates the residential from their complex. Have you ever done any research on that?
We actually did, and it was actually part of the March packet that originally came to committee. You can look that up online, but it's in there. And we also talked about the number of gates between different types of commercially-zoned property and residential as well. It's all in there. And it's, it's common. And the last thing I'd like to say to you, ma'am, with all due respect, is that Steeple Hill doesn't get they want. We've, we pushed them and forced them to change that fence out, all of it, not just the gate issue at all. And then lastly, if I could-
The rest of the fence is new.
Our legal counsel has said the village cannot direct them to take the gate down. That's private property. It'd be like the village coming to you and say, you have to paint your house purple. We can't legally do it. That's what our counsel has told us.
Then I can use that gate. I can go use their school.
Absolutely. If you want to cut through, but remember, you're now going on their private property. You're not on public street right-of-way. So if they wanted to ask, to see you arrested for trespassing, 'cause you're on their private property, they could do that.
So once they step past their, their boundary?
Once they go across the gate, they're then on public right-of-way of what would be Washington Street extended. That's the public street. Anybody from the public, whether from Hoffman Estates, Schaumburg, Streamwood, Wisconsin, can use that right-of-way. They can walk on it, they can drive on it, they can do what they want on it.
I don't think it should include parking.
Pardon me?
I don't think it should include parking.
Well, and that's why the, we have the parking sticker program for overnight.
But they don't have stickers.
And then they'll get tickets. And at some point in time, it'll become financially difficult for them to continue to do that.
But people just break the rules all the time. I still think that I like that idea where you open the parking at the police station. Even for me, if I wanted to park there. I could just walk around the corner.
We allow people to park there if they have a hardship or they have an oversized vehicle. We do the same thing at this building. It is not to be open for permit parking or anything like that, no.
Well, then maybe Steeple Hill needs to buy some property.
They have more than enough parking.
Well, then why are people using that? I don't understand.
Because they don't want to pay the cost of the sticker, as we discussed at the March meeting.
Well, see, it's still-
And that's why we're ticketing them, 'cause it's gonna be expensive for them one way or another.
Well, I don't know. What is the solution? Just giving tickets?
We'll let the committee make a decision.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? All right, seeing no one else out in the audience wishing to address this, what is the feeling of the committee? I appreciate the time and effort that staff's put into all the research. To get to the bottom line, though, have we seen a less major problem with the parking over there since we did the permits?
Yeah, the parking, the parking permit program has certainly been successful.
Okay, that's how this whole thing started?
Yes, and I think even, even Mr. Ewing-
There are, there are still, and the chief will attest to it, people that occasionally park on that extended part of Washington. And we will occasionally, as Mr. Ewing's letter said, get a calls from the neighborhood saying that there's cars parked there. They'll respond over, and they will be ticketed. It's, they don't always have, on every shift, the ability to be proactively patrolling all the streets in their district. So, chief, you're standing behind the pole, sitting behind the pole, but when we've talked about it, that's what's going on. And we need to continue to direct resources there until we send the message that cars should not be attempting to park there overnight unless they are appropriately stickered cars.
You concur with that?
I got a question, Karen.
Okay, Trustee Stanton.
Rather than just having a permit there on that, that particular part of Washington, which is of no street whatsoever, can we just have no parking signs put there?
We would, normally when the, if the village tries to do that, Trustee Stanton, we go to the neighbors that would be impacted, which would be those two homes, and, and see how they feel about it, 'cause you're taking away basically their, their parking. Remember, they could have stickers and park there overnight as well. And the, I guess my other thought is that we do have occasions where we've tried small steps, like making one area now parking, and it just drove the issue deeper into the surrounding subdivision. I would rather charge the chief with making sure we're doing increased enforcement nightly over there. And there's hopefully something that we're gonna get through the board as far as the budget that will help with that. An expansion of our ASO program where they would do parking enforcement, which we, the tougher we are, the more we can be there, the more we can ticket. It's a different, Peter, what was the cost of their sticker? Was it three hundred dollars for the additional sticker? Do you remember?
I don't recall. I'm sorry.
But, and how much is a parking ticket, chief, each time?
Twenty-five dollars.
Right. So, at some point in time, if people keep doing it, it's gonna come to the point where they're gonna be getting close to the price of the darn sticker. And we surveyed the parking lots internally and talked to their management. They have more than enough parking spots, more than enough. There are parking spots on that property vacant every single night.
I need to have you come up to the microphone. And give us your name and address, please.
Yeah, Carrie Bonora, B-O-N-O-R-A. I'm also by, on Alcoa Lane.
What's your address, sir?
I'm four fifty.
Thank you.
This is about something else, but something to do with the parking. I notice, there's a problem. I think there's like, when you, in front of the police station, I think that road is too narrow to park any cars, you know, off Spring Mill, 'cause you gotta go over the double yellow line. And I think it's like a hazard, isn't it? You know, I don't, I think it's a hazard, plus a lot of cars parking over by four hundred Alcoa Lane. There's two cars that park at the intersection of Alcoa and Spring Mill. And that, and when people come, turn right, go westbound Alcoa, and they're going eastbound, it's too narrow to pass. I think it's a hazard if they could at least keep the parking like hundred foot away, plus there's a hybrid right on the intersection of Spring Mill and, and Alcoa. It's very tight there, you know? I'm sure you've seen that, you know, 'cause we live down the police station. It's kind of a hazard, I think. You know, it's just too narrow, you know, and there's a lot of traffic in Alcoa, there's a lot of through traffic there. I think they cut over to Bodie. If we could like trim the parking back, it's just too, plus there's a hybrid right over there. I saw a car parking in front of a hybrid earlier today before I came here.
Well, hopefully they got a ticket. Mr. Norris, did you have something to address?
But it's just too tight there, you know?
So the, the committee will remember that when the parking permit program first started, it started in that area specifically, because the other association there was having, they don't have enough parking. And they actually built more parking, but we also gave them more on-street parking room. We can ask Mr. Hanky, who's our director, traffic engineer, our director of transportation, look at that area again. Peter, if you take note, and we'll look at it, and see if we can do anything there.
Yeah, I talked to one of the engineers, and when they were widening the road, or when they were redoing the road, they built it, did a nice job. I wish they would have widened, and so the cars would have more room. It's just so tight in there, you know?
Yes.
I'm sure you've been by there.
Many times.
Yeah, so if we could do something by there, that'd be great, you know? It might be an accident or something, 'cause you're gonna go over the double yellow line all the time, especially after like ten o'clock at night, you know? So, okay, that's it, that's all for me. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Yes, Trustee Gada.
Mr. Norris, have we informed the two residents?
Mr. Norris, have we informed the two residents to see if they would object to having a, a no parking sign?
No, as I said, we'd have to talk to them.
So we haven't even thought about that before?
No, because it's really the access to their drive. I mean, that's their access to their driveway. So we haven't talked about, unless Mr. Hanky did and he did not advise me, we did not talk to them about a complete ban on parking in front of their homes. No.
But that would probably eliminate quite a bit of this. And it's just the two homes. This is, the way I'm looking at it, 990 and 995. Is that correct?
Yeah, and parking is restricted on one side of the street already.
Yeah. Parking is restricted on one side already. That's how it is all over the village. One side is restricted. So we go to the other person, ask them. I, I, well, I think what Mike would tell you and I would tell you is that it will, given the length of that is, it's not very far. If they need to park somewhere else, they're going to, they'll park around the corner then. We are just going to move the parking issue deeper into the subdivision where the real answer is having Ted's people, chief boss's people, excuse me, write more tickets.
But they still need to have permits on that section.
That's right, over, for overnight.
They have to have the permits for the section.
That's right.
That's all. Thank you.
Trustee Palafis.
I'd like to see us go towards the process where we vacate that so it's no longer a, a public right of way. As we, Mr. Norris described earlier, that way it is no longer our issue. It's private property owners and private property owners and the gate goes away. To me, that seems like a pretty easy process.
I don't know how that would cause the gate to go away, truthfully.
Well.
Still on their property.
Private property on one side couldn't access private property on the other. So there's no longer a, a public right of way. The, the public right of way ends at the edge of, the north edge of 995 Str driveway. In my mind, which is a scary place at times. That's what I have.
You said it, not us.
That's what I have concluded that I think is a win-win for everybody. And.
Well, what's the direction of the rest of the board? Yes, mayor.
The permit parking system is working. We need to do more enforcement. I get that. But I tend to agree that we're just going to be shifting all this around when we start. Cherry picking one area to do this and then moves the traffic or the parking somewhere else. That's just my.
We would almost have to have a police officer sitting there around the clock picking him up for trespassing, which is unrealistic to.
I think once the gate's gone though, you know.
Who's to say the gate would be gone?
Well, I mean, if it's private property, then they would have to remove the gate and we can enforce it.
Next step from here.
That's up to the committee. Do you wish to?
Our, our recommendation is that we continue to enforce it and we leave it as is and continue to monitor it. And we come back to committee if there's problems.
I would move to that effect.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. And that is to see how this progresses with enforcement, which I think is probably the, the best thing we can do at this point. Because we seem to have our hands tied with legal issues otherwise. Any other discussion on that, the motion? Trustee Newell.
I, I just wanted to say that with school starting and everything, you can monitor that to see who's going to be using the gate or not. If we give it like maybe, I don't know, if we're going to give it a timeline, three months or something, I don't know.
My, my suggestion is we wait to see if there's actually any problems that occur and then we bring it back.
Right, okay.
I don't think, our collective opinion is that things aren't going to change other than increased enforcement. And there's more presence that. If we start seeing an up, real uptick in vandalism in one way, shape or form, or parking, then people are ignoring tickets, then we're going to have to come up with another solution.
Or if we issue, have the problem again of neglect on the part of the association there.
Agreed, on their property. Right.
Which is something that code enforcement can track.
Right.
All right, any other discussions? Trustee Palafis.
I was kind of heading in the same direction as trustee Newell where I'd like to see us give an update in six months. We've already had some reports of graffiti and, and whatnot, so. My opinion, it's not working. I mean, I think it's better, but overall, we haven't solved the problem.
Honestly, I wouldn't mind a timeline as well.
I mean, I'm not against what you've all have, you know, proposed, but I would like a check.
Well, six months from now, we're in the middle of winter.
Yeah, or nine months. It could be, the, the numbers.
I would say maybe in the, in the spring, if anything, to see if. Or if between now and then, if there's an overabundance of complaints coming in and issues that are coming up, then that could come back at any time.
I agree on that.
That one sounds good.
I mean, just because we don't put a date on it doesn't mean it can't come back to us at any time.
Would you consider April or May's committee meeting?
That would be about the first, I would think it would need to come, you know, be a time to do it. Because then you get through the winter months, you see how it's gone over time. And in the middle of winter, I don't think we're going to be able to get anywhere.
I, I agree. If that's, and that's enough time to see if the process is improving. I just wanted an update at some point.
April sounds reasonable.
Is that consensus? Okay. All right, well, we do have a motion on the floor. I don't know if we need to include it in the motion or not.
Well, I think they're going to monitor it anyway, so it's not a big deal.
So, all right, we do have a motion on the floor and that is to increase enforcement and, and keep a watch on this until that point and until, in the spring, we'll have it come forward just for an update. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We are approved with that. I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We are adjourned. Thank you.
I'd like to call order the special planning, building and zoning committee for the village of Hoffman Estates on this August 20th, 2018. Roll call, please.
Chairman Stanton.
Present.
Vice chairman, Arnett.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Newell.
Present.
Trustee Palafis.
Present.
Trustee Gata.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present.
We are here for one item and new business and that's a request by McShane Hoffman Estates LLC for approval to mass grade a lot in the Huntington 90 Business Park for a future building known as Bistrannic.
So moved.
Now, second. Thank you. Pete, you want to tell us what this is about?
Sure. Also in March of this year, you heard an introduction from Bistrannic, who's a company looking at locating across the tollway from us on the Huntington 90 property. They were before you for a 6B request that was approved. They've been working on, on site development plans with the landowner. Also involves the extension of the Eagle Way from its current terminus to Central Road, which would connect Lakewood to Central. That's part of an obligation of the property owner when they start to develop. Those plans, which include a Cook County review, some wetlands and some other design decisions that they've been working on in their plan for their site, they've, they've been working through the summer on the plans, basically. They are in a position where it is somewhat critical for them to begin mass grading as soon as possible before the weather changes to help alleviate some poor soils issues on the sites. So all they're looking for tonight is approval to start that mass grading work, which would include some minor tree removal as part of this, which was going to occur with the building anyway. It would be done at their own risk. We would accept a deposit as we typically do. We've done these types of approvals before on several occasions, including the Trump Building, just to the east of the site. They also did a similar thing. So that's what they're looking for tonight to kind of get a head start on the site. We do anticipate that the site plan for Bistrannic will be before the Planning and Zoning Commission in September. So it won't be far behind this, but given the time of the season, it's somewhat critical that they are able to start now with the grading.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes, trustee Mills.
And I know I've brought this up in other hearings too. They understand that it is totally at their own risk.
Yes, they do.
They have acknowledged that.
They have acknowledged that.
And do you, will they have to submit some type of a tree removal plan of what they're going to, in the mass grading area?
They're, they're actually inventoried. It's not on this grading sheet per se, but they are inventoried. We're working with them on the new site plan to deal with the replacements. None of the trees that they would remove are really capable of being transplanted. A lot of them are not in the best of condition. So their new site plan, you'll, you'll see some enhanced landscaping to accommodate that.
And I'm glad to hear that they're probably going to be back in in September. That's good. That's all.
Anyone else?
Yes. Pete, could you clarify the bad soil comment? Is that like the bad soil that eats Joe's pipes? Bad soil?
Actually, I, the petitioner, I don't know if the petitioner can probably define exactly what type of bad soil. That's not able to support the booming.
Good evening, committee. My name is Brian Quigley. I'm with Connor Commercial. The property owner is McShane Development LLC. And so Peter's been working together with us now and Jim for the last several months. We've got a very high quality project in front of us and it's very exciting. We're working hard to make it happen. And so time is running out on us. We've got rain tonight. And so the condition of the soil, we've got, we've got organic material and we've got moisture content to deal with. And so during the warm summer months are really when we want to dig up the soil and disc it up and, and dry it out and then recompact it. And so if we don't do that, what we're going to end up with is, is a chemical way to, to support the building, which is lime. And so lime has a pretty significant cost to it. We want to avoid that. It's not in our budget. And so we want to get going immediately. And so really, we're thankful that you've organized this, this special meeting.
What happens if it continues to rain on a daily basis? I mean, you can't dry out the soil, right?
We build an ark.
Defeat the purpose of, of our plan. But our plan is to, while we're in August here, get going and, and get on the site tomorrow. If, I mean, we're going to be pulling a permit tomorrow morning. And so I know it's raining tonight and it's going to rain tomorrow, but our plan is to, these long, warm days are numbered. And so we want to get out there and make hay.
Okay, any other questions?
We'll be back in February in September.
Any other questions up here? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed? The ayes have it. We are adjourned.
Five-minute break before the board meeting recommences. Of August 20th, can you call the road and reestablish a quorum, ma'am clerk?
Gata.
Present.
Trustee Arnett.
Present.
Trustee Mills.
Present.
Trustee Newell.
Present.
Trustee Palafis.
Present.
Trustee Stanton.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present. Okay, we do have a quorum. We'll move on to item three. This is recognition of the audience. This is the time if someone wants to comment on an issue or a matter that is not on the agenda, now's the time to come forward. Come on up. Address for the record, please.
Yvonne Burdine.
Okay.
4911 Thornbark.
Okay.
Yes, my concern is the gambling business that's going in. And the concern that I have is, why are we bringing this gambling business in? It's to bring in money and there's a tax rate and a certain percentage of every dollar that's brought in goes to the schools, the fire department and so forth. Is that correct?
No, there's a formula the state has. So much goes to the state, so much goes to the person who owns the machines, so much goes to the place they're at, the business owner, and the village does get a very small percentage.
What is that percentage?
5% of the winnings.
5%, I understand. Okay, now with the other two gambling businesses in Hoffman Estate, can you tell me what they have brought in since they have been in business?
We, we, the village share came about $400,000.
Say again?
But, but your, your number of two is incorrect. We have approximately 40.
In Hoffman Estate?
Yes.
Oh, that's interesting. Okay, can you tell me what they brought in?
About $400,000.
Our share.
Our share.
Our share.
You can go on the state website and the only gaming website.
I see.
And I have little, every establishment and how much they made.
Oh, that's good.
By community.
By community, yeah.
So is this intended to lower our taxes?
No, it was originally intended, frankly, to keep businesses in business. That we were losing a lot of restaurants during the recession, establishments. So this was to help them out and it did help them out.
So by having gambling businesses, it helps other businesses? Is that correct?
No, it helped both those businesses.
It helps them?
I think anything that draws traffic, any type of business, obviously has a residual effect on the businesses around it.
Right, okay, I understand. Next question is, can you tell me, have you done a projection of what this is going to cost in added fire and police needs that we're going to have? Because if we have a drinking and a gambling place that's open till midnight, we're going to have fights and so forth.
We have establishments that are open till midnight or, or past. And I don't see any increased police and fire calls for this. We have absolutely no incidences at any of these so-called gaming parlors. For the most part, they're older people. They're not, they're not causing any trouble.
I see. Is my understanding that the approval for this happened at the last board meeting, correct?
That's correct.
So you understand, the only approval that was necessary from the village board was the liquor license. After that, it's a flat building permit for what's called a tenant finish in the space in the, in the center.
Right, I see.
That's all administrative.
Yes, and, and so.
And they have to go through the state process to get licensed for gaming as well.
So we have to see, as a, as a homeowner, as I'm walking my dog down there and I see men working in the building, I see men taking photos from the outside, and these people are obviously interested in this location. And I say to them, what is going in here? And they don't tell me. And I ask it a second time, what is going in here? And I'm asking, I'm asking. And then I don't find out about it until it's already approved. So what I have to do as a homeowner then is go to every single vacant business in my, in that strip mall and either call the owner of the, of the strip mall or call this place. What do I do next, next time?
You look at, on the village's website and you look at our meeting agendas, which are posted in advance of our meetings.
Okay.
And you read those and it will tell you.
Okay, so, and that's going to say this location is applying for a liquor license.
Yes.
Yes.
So I always have to go buy liquor licenses. Is that correct?
Liquor commission and then village board, both can, will have liquor related items on it.
Okay, so there's no way that we can have any impact in this going in at this point?
When the village opted in to allowing gaming eight years ago, 10 years ago?
Yeah, it's been a while now.
Yes.
That decision was made. At this point, it's only an issue whether or not the establishment qualifies for a liquor license, period.
That's it, huh?
That's it.
They have to be vetted by the state to get the gambling.
With all due respect, ma'am, there's a whole bunch of restaurants in town that wouldn't be in business now and they probably disagree with you. And you asked about taxes before. They definitely help your taxes from going up.
Oh.
The village portion.
I see what you're saying. So that by having these gaming businesses, the restaurateurs, their taxes come down?
No. Their businesses produce more taxes and the $400,000 that comes from the gaming goes into the same fund that the property tax money goes into. And therefore, we don't have as need as, for as much property tax money as we might.
So how about the homeowners? Is it going to help us?
Well, I just told you, it does.
It does buy.
Every dime we can get in through sales tax, gaming, hotel motel tax, tickets, all those development related revenues, building permits, that all goes to offset the potential need for property taxes, all of it.
And yet the taxes for property owners are just.
Again, if you look at what your portion, your village portion of your tax bill is, it's about 12%. The schools are about 67%.
Oh, yes, I understand that.
Right.
All right, I think you've, you've addressed my issues. Okay, great. Thank you very much. Good night.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything you'd like to bring forward? Now we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of the August 6th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? See none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. Move on to five consent agenda. Chair would accept a motion.
So moved for a unanimous vote.
Now, second.
There's a motion and a second. The items on the consent agenda are A, approval of the agenda. B, approval of the schedule of bills for August 20th, 2018, the amount of $4,394,251.09. C, request board approval of an ordinance granting a variation to premises at 1395 Devonshire Lane. D, request board approval of an ordinance granting a master sign plan under section 9-3-8-M-13 of the zoning code for the property located at 375 Higgins Road, Aldi. E, request board approval of an ordinance granting a special use to Poplar Creek Crossing LLC owner and David Land's Doing Business as Orange Theory Fitness tenant, 2626 North Sutton Road. And F, request board approval of an ordinance granting a variation to premises at 2501 North Barrington Road, Siemens. There is a motion and a second. Any questions on any of these items? See none. Can you pull the board, ma'am clerk?
Trustee Gata.
Present, yes.
Trustee Arnett. Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafis.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye, motion carried. A couple of items. I have one resignation, Labrika Schaffer from the youth commission. Chair would accept a motion?
So moved with regrets. So moved, regrets.
There's a motion in a second. Any discussion? See none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carried. This we don't have to vote on, though I'm sure it'd be unanimous vote. Happy birthday to Trustee Stanton, coming up Wednesday, so have a great birthday. On Wednesday, the 22nd, we have Wine Wednesday out at the Craft Canteen at the Village Green. The event kicks off at 5:30 PM. There'll be live music by Wedding Band. We'll begin at 7:00 PM with a band show as an added bonus. This Saturday, the Hoffman Estate's Police Department is once again hosting the world's largest truck convoy at Cirrus Center Arena to benefit the Special Olympics. It's a great event for the family and kids will love the variety of vehicles, including semi trucks, fire trucks, dump trucks, police vehicles, and much more. Trucks will take off at approximately 10:00 AM or so to make sure to get there early. And the Platts concert is coming up on September 7th, 8th, and 9th at the Village Green. You want to throw anything else in there about that, Trustee Palafis?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, the Citizens Fire Academy is opening up spots again, so it's going to begin on August 29th at 6:30. You can contact Lieutenant Tony Butler at 847-843-4832. It's a great program, both the police and the fire academies are a great deal of fun. A couple items, one, tell me what's going on with the Bergman House? We're getting into another winter and there's still nothing happening.
I have been in contact with the developer as recent as today. He has building, construction plans for remodeling the house that are in good shape. We're waiting for the plans for the garage that he would build and the lot grading, utility connections, so basically the exterior portion of the plans. He's contracted with an engineer, and I asked him for a timeline when he would submit it. He didn't, he wasn't sure yet. He was going to let me know when the engineer thought he would have his portion done. That's the status of the plans at this point.
I was concerned that you'd go through another winter without the house being secured.
Did we have any kind of a timeframe on that?
I was going to ask that, too.
We do, but the problem is, is that it's really the M and I would have to enforce and take them out from under contract. The village's deadline is there and it's in the approvals. But if they don't meet it, what is our remedy? It's either, the M and I would have to go through the process to void their contract with them. We don't have the contract. And then, which they can do, but as they said, then we're left with demolishing the building and then ultimately deeding the property to the Park District. So the M and I is frustrated. We are definitely frustrated. Peter could tell you, I checked on it last Thursday, which I think is one of the reasons he called today. And they should have been doing this stuff concurrently, not sequentially.
It was just very frustrating.
100% agree with the mayor. If we go through winter, that building's in deep trouble.
Okay, some other things have been going on. On August 7th, we had our National Night Out at the police buildings, very well attended. The rain let up and we had a pretty good crowd there. It was excellent. On Wednesday, the 8th, we have the retirement luncheon for firefighter Jim Long here. It's been a lot of retirements and people moving on in their lives and bringing in new people. The 4th of July meeting took place on Thursday, August 9th. On Friday, the state representative Crespo was able to get Fritz Caggy, who's running for Assessor, out to meet some of the local mayors, so we got some ideas about what he's planning to do if he is successful in the election. Saturday, the 11th, we had the Community Health and Wellness Center out at Barrington Square Town Center. We had Eagle Court of Honor for two scouts. We had three block parties, one on Concord, one on Winston, and one on Park Lane, all in Winston Knoll subdivision. So it was very convenient for those of us who went. Also, on Monday, the 13th, we didn't have a meeting, so it was a night off. Almost seems like plain hooking, we don't have a meeting on Monday night. On Thursday, the 14th, we had the Celtic Fest meeting. And on Saturday, the 18th, I went to Swap Neil Shaw's wedding at the Renaissance. It was very nice. They had a lot of people there. And we had two block parties also on Saturday. And on Sunday, we had the Beth Tikva Annual Picnic. And we had Luca Corso's Eagle Court of Honor at St. Hubert's. That's the biggest crowd I've seen for an Eagle Court of Honor. It was, there were just a few chairs left in the back row on one side of St. Hubert's gymnasium, so at least we got a place to sit there. Looked dubious for a while. And the other great thing that happened in last week, I got to walk my granddaughter to her bus stop. She's a kindergarten at Whitley High School, Whitley Grammar School, High School. She's smart.
You're rushing it.
Whitley School, which is kind of neat because that's where her dad went, so sort of went full circle. It's pretty cool. And I'll quit talking now. We'll start with Trustee Cummins. We'll start with Trustee Arnett.
Thank you. On August 11th, I also attended the three block parties and the health fair along with the Eagle Scout award ceremony. Seems like we've been going to a lot of those lately. On the 18th, I went to the recycling event, which was very well put on by Public Works. Thank you very much. Also attended the block party on Amherst and Highland and also on Swindon Place. And then on the 19th, did attend the Beth Tikva Picnic and also the Eagle Scout Award for Luca Corso. He's done a lot of really good things and he's going to have a good future ahead of him. Congratulations to our two fire lieutenants and our new police probationary officer, and happy birthday to Gary.
Thank you. Speaking of Gary, Trustee Stanton.
On August 7th, I was able to attend on behalf of our village, the Harper College Mayor and Village Manager Breakfast. It had to deal with, what they want to do is add bonds, retire bonds, and then put in new bonds so they can build a new building for their four-year college program. And they were just explaining that to all of us. Also, on the 7th, I had a discussion here with the mayor and village manager with Pastronic regarding their mass grading, and you saw the results tonight. Also, on the 7th, I was able to attend with most everybody here, the National Night Out event. On the 8th, we had a discussion here regarding Solutions Manufacturing and their sprinkler system installation. And on the 11th, where you guys all went to different parties, block parties, I ended up having a golf outing. For my son-in-law's father who passed away, it's called the Lauren Thorsonson Memorial Golf Outing, and it's done every year. And so that's where I was on the 11th while you guys were doing all that. Then on the 19th, I attended the Beth Tikva Congregation Annual Picnic. And that's it for me.
Okay, Trustee Mills.
Also was at National Night Out. Thank you to the police department for a great job. And Karen Arnett, you helped them out with a lot of things, too. Thank you on behalf of all of us. You got lucky, the sun came out. Thought you were going to lose it with that rain, but it sure cleared up nicely. On the 8th, attended Jim Long's retirement party. Jim's been, was on our fire department for quite a while, and it was nice to see his brother Matt there that day, too. Haven't seen him in quite a while. On the 11th, attended the joint Eagle Scout Honor and the Community Health Fair. On the 15th, I got to go out and play mom with my fifth-grade granddaughter at Sycamore Grade School out there because her mom couldn't make it. And I think I was probably the oldest person in the school building. Except for maybe the janitor, he looked like he was a little older. Man, those teachers are young nowadays. And that evening, attended Northwest Mosquito Abatement District meeting. On yesterday, the 19th, attended the Beth Tikva Picnic. I want to send kudos out to Beth Tikva. They very much impressed me with all their different functions that they do. And it's nice to see that they're wide open on who they support. They support wings, they support a Lutheran church, they support pads, they support Maryville Academy, every different nation. It doesn't matter what religion it is, they do something to help them. It was very impressive. Happy birthday to Trustee Stanton. Congratulations to our two new fire lieutenants and probationary police officer. And I was excited to see the new transit bus, little bus from Pace go down Governor's Lane the other day, so it's kind of fun to see that we have that. And I think tomorrow's the day we get to go and see the actual facility, and that'll be a great thing. Glad to see them in our community. That's it.
Great. Trustee Palafis.
I also want to reiterate some of the things forementioned. But I wanted to thank Riley Johnson for coming and reading her letter. That was a pretty moving letter. Her brother is really good friends with AJ, and that's kind of how we found out about it, is through Monica, who talked to my wife, Michelle, and, you know, she shot it into Jennifer, and it was just a really cool award nationally to be number one at something. Also, congratulations to Lieutenant Bob Orr and Brian Campbell. I love the promotions. It's great to see those guys. We're probably keeping the chief here as they're all celebrating, so we're sorry about that. Congratulations to Timothy Kubat. You know, the teachers don't look young. The firefighters and the police look really young, too, just for the record. Congrats to Bruce and Dan for their landmark work anniversaries, respectively, 20 and 30 years. It's great having you guys here. And thank you for all who worked and planned the recycling event. There was, it was massive on social media, even throughout the day. All the Facebook groups up in North Hoffman, Winston Knolls, they were all running it. And if you haven't been to the recycling event and they have pictures of the cars, and it was really cool. And the lines and the stuff that you could drop off. So it was very well received. I'm excited about Pastronic as well as Somerset, and I know they've been patiently waiting in the audience to further turn, but it'll be great to get those folks in. And then happy birthday to Gary. Again, I'm always available for a party. Or breakfast.
Today was the party, Gary. Today was the party. This was it.
Oh, my gosh.
The next three days, I'm at legal seminars, so...
That's no fun.
No fun at all.
Thank you, Trustee Palafis. Trustee Newell.
Okay, pretty much some of the same as others with the 8/7 National Night Out, which was a nice crowd, and thank you that the rain stopped. 8/11 was the Barrington Square Health Fair, and then the dual Eagle Scouts of Grassie and Witt, which was awesome to be able to go to and attend. On the 18th, once again, kudos to everyone for the recycle event. It's a great attended event to our residents also. Also that day, two block parties, one on Amherst and Highland and the other by Swindon. On the 19th, the Beth Tikva Picnic, which, once again, nice, great day. And as Trustee Mills had said, the things that they are involved in is just absolutely amazing. And on top of that, also a wonderful, huge vegetable garden that they have and that they donate back to the communities and the pantries. Also, did the Eagle Scout Corso on that day. Congrats to all those who have been sworn in for fire and police today. Happy birthday, Trustee Stanton, and many more. I don't think going to a seminar is fun, but anyway. Last but not least, just a little shout-out. School is beginning. Some started earlier, some today. Just slow down, be careful. Kids are excited, they're running for the buses, so, you know, and today in my route, the one bus was a half hour late and the kids were all scrambling. So just be watchful, be careful, and slow down. That's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Gada.
Okay, here we go. Tuesday, August 7th, the 35th anniversary for National Night Out. And then from there, I left to attend a quarterly Haveford Homeowners Association meeting. Then on Wednesday, the 8th, the retirement luncheon for, as it was said here, for Fire Lieutenant Jim Long. And also that night, attended the Regional Airport Advisory Committee at the Schaumburg Airport. Then on Saturday, the 11th, attended the Health and Wellness Expo at the Barrington Square. Then from there, that we had gone to the Schaumburg Township Disability Picnic, that where Anna works over there. And that was a, and that was a good turnout. In fact, the mayor and Anna and myself, we attended that. Also on that day, the Eagle Court of Honor celebrated for two people, Robert Grassie and Colin Witt at the Sabre United Methodist Church, 701 Schaumburg Road. And then also from there, we went to three block parties, as the other ones were saying, on Concord Lane. Then from there, we went to Winston Drive. And then from there, there was one other one that I didn't make. I just noticed it here. Then on September, I mean, Saturday, August 18th, recycle department, you know what, Joe? That was absolutely excellent, right? There was, Trustee Arnett was working there and so was Trustee Anna. And I'm going to say, there had to be, as you said, 826. I only heard 800. But people were saying, as compared to last year and the year before, they weren't waiting more than three to five to eight minutes. Everything just worked like clockwork. Kevin did an excellent, excellent job. In fact, all of your staff that was out there, they did a remarkable job for it. And I keep hearing people talk about it. So, yes, and it was hot that day, though. Holy Moses, thank God that you guys were given water. Also, when we left there, there was two block parties, as they said, on Amherst Highland. And the second one was at Swindon. Then on Sunday, the 19th, we went to the Beth Tikva Congregation, and everything that was said here about them is absolutely correct. And then I missed the Eagle Scout for Luca Corso, right? But anyways, aside from that, mayor, that's it.
Great.
I figured.
Everybody's been busy, that's good. We'll move on to Village Manager's report.
Yes, mayor, I'm pleased to announce that the village's newly redesigned website, with all the increased functionality, the Google Translate, which will make our page available in 100 different languages, and increased search functions, and the new mega menus that the board got a chance to see and look at, will be going live this Thursday morning. So it's been a significant task. I'd like to thank Suzanne and, believe it or not, Dan, who was not Mr. Technology, played a role in this. Jen Georgievic, Ryan Johnson from Development Services, and Parth Josie, also from Development Services, had major involvement in it. And keep your fingers crossed, Wednesday morning. That's it, mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Thursday morning. Thursday morning.
Wednesday morning is Gary's birthday.
Wednesday morning is Gary's birthday. Happy birthday, Trustee Stanton.
Village Clerk's report, 6C.
You guys talk too much. My hand is tired of writing. I have no report.
I'll have to do this more often. 6C, we have received the treasurer's report, and that will be filed. Any questions on the treasurer's report from anybody? Okay. Move on to Planning and Zoning Commission, if the chairperson, Combs, hasn't gone home. Oh, you're still here.
She fell asleep, though. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended for approval, a request by DeShaw BSM LLC, owner and Gigi's Playhouse applicant for special use under Section 9-8-2-C-9 of the zoning code to permit the operation of a Gigi's Playhouse National Achievement Center on the property located at 2350 West Higgins Road, Barrington Square Town Center. The voting was 10 ayes, 1 absent.
Chair would accept a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second. Any discussion on this one? Seeing no discussion, can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Gata.
Yeah, aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas. Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Mayor McCleod.
Aye, motion carried.
Planning and Zoning Commission recommended for approval, a request by Crusoe Development Corp., agent for the owner and inner-work architects applicant for a special use under Section 9-8-2-C-9 of the zoning code to prevent a banquet facility on the property located at 2354 West Higgins Road with one condition, but was 10 ayes, 1 absent.
Chair would accept a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
There's a motion, there's a second. Any questions on this one? Trustee Mills.
Do they say what the seating capacity is going to be for the banquet facility?
I think it was 80, wasn't it?
Eighty-four.
Mr. Briggs, can you come up and?
I believe it was 84, yeah.
Because I didn't get, part of my application was missing, so.
Indicate yourself for the record, sir.
Bill Griggs, 2354 West Higgins Road, Papa Creek Bowl. The seating is for 84.
Eighty-four.
And you're still going to be using the second floor, too?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Mayor McCleod.
Aye, motion carried.
Planning and Zoning Commission recommended for approval, a request by Crusoe Development Corp., agent for the owner and inner-work architects applicant for a preliminary and final site plan amendment for the facade changes and outdoor seating on the property located at 2354 West Higgins Road with nine conditions. Voting 10 ayes, 1 absent.
Chair would accept a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any questions on this one? Trustee Mills.
Couple things on this seating area. Mr. Griggs, you may want to address this. In part of the, the finding, it was asked, I think, at your commission, committee meeting, if it was going to be used both by banquets and the bar patrons? And it said yes, but yet in another section, it says only for the banquets. Which is correct, and how's that going to work?
We're going to use the outside seating area for both the banquet and the bar.
Are you going to have an, an opening in the gate there or something?
No, you'd have to come through the.
Through the rest, through the bowling alley itself?
Yes.
And what, and you got the smoking right next to it?
The smoking is in between that and, and the main doors.
Okay, now they're not going to be able to smoke in that.
No, ma'am.
In those, and that should be posted, we just went through that with.
Neighborhood Inn.
Neighborhood Inn. That has to be posted, that there's no smoking there. And they'll be, they'll be doing waitress service out there then, too?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that going to be open nightly when the bowling alley's open, then, I take it, that area?
Yes, seasonally.
Okay. So they cannot, so they'd have to go in through the bowling alley? There is no exit, no opening in that gate, as you said, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions on this item? Seeing none, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
No.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Mayor McCleod.
Aye. Motion carried.
Planning and Zoning Commission recommended for approval, a request by Crusoe Development Corp., agent for owner and inner-work architects applicant for a master sign plan dated August 15, 2018, in accordance with Section 9-3-8-M-13 of the zoning code for the property located at 2250 to 2360 West Higgins Road, Barrington Square Town Center, 10 ayes, 1 absent, was about.
Chairs accept a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any questions on this one? Seeing no questions, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Mayor McCleod.
Aye, motion carried.
Planning and Zoning Commission recommended for approval, a request by Hoffman Estates Acquisitions LLC and Somerset Development LLC, contract purchasers, co-applicants under authority of US Bank and a successor trustee for Series 2006-D TOPS 21 by C Roman numeral 3 Asset Management LLC as special servicer, owner for variations, Section 9-8-3-A-2-B location and Section 9-8-3-C-5-A.
Need a glass of water there?
For. Height of the Hoffman Estates Municipal Code and a map amendment rezoning from 04 Office Campus District to CMU Commercial Mixed Use Zoning District with the mixed-use development option for a mixed-use project on approximately 150 acres on the south side of Lakewood Boulevard between Eagle Way and Huntington Boulevard and on the north side of Central Road, 2000 Center Drive, 2001 Lakewood Boulevard, 2501 Eagle Way, with four conditions, but was 10 ayes, 1 absent.
Do you care to repeat that? Chair would accept a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any questions on this item? Is anybody here from Somerset that would want to say a few words? Come up and identify yourself for the record? You waited here patiently for hours.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board. Happy birthday, Chairman Stanton.
Thank you.
I just want to say thanks to the village for their ongoing cooperation. It's been wonderful to work with you thus far. And this is the first of a number of steps that we need to bring this project forward, but we're very appreciative and very hopeful that this will come to fruition. So thank you.
We are also.
Yes.
Any, anybody else? Trustee Palafas.
I was going to ask him, what are your next steps?
Yes, speaking of the microphone, because we're on TV and we're.
Yes. We're, we're looking at, at a, a number of, of things. We're looking at certain incentives, certain entitlements, possible classifications. We're trying to see exactly what works best with, with our project, our capital stack, what we need to bring this to fruition and the interests of the community. So it's, it's a balancing, but we're still, negotiations and discussions are, are ongoing and have been ongoing for quite some time.
Thank you. Hey, anything else? Did you want to say something, sir? Just identify yourself for the record.
I'm Johnny Anderson, I live at 40 Lakeside in South Barrington. I've followed this for a while and I'm familiar with the new urbanism, which is really highly successful around the country in a lot of places. And I think this is a terrific project for Hoffman Estates and for the whole area here. And so I, I think you should go ahead with it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anybody on the board have any other comments? Seeing none, can you pull the board, Madam Clerk?
Trustee Gata.
Aye.
Trustee Arnett.
Aye.
Trustee Mills.
Aye.
Trustee Newell.
Aye.
Trustee Palafas.
Aye.
Trustee Stanton.
Aye.
Mayor McCleod.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you, Chairperson Combs, thank you. Move on to a.
Mayor.
Yes.
Trustee Mills brought to my attention that the finding effect for the last item on, regarding Papa Creek Bowl, did have a condition that says that the outdoor seating area was only to be used by the banquets, not by the bar.
I'll be reminded of that.
Pardon me?
They should be reminded of that.
Well, except the, his, I just want to make sure that that's the intent of the vote of the board, even though the petitioner said it was both bar and banquet. And unfortunately, they left before we could.
Well, we voted on the finding, not on his comments.
That's true. And we'll have to contact him and make sure he knows and that it came up. And if he needs to come back, he can come back.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's fine.
Just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Appreciate that.
Eight additional business, what's the rule of the committee here?
Try to make a motion to approve by omnibus votes, items 8A through G, because I don't think we had any mixed votes on any of those.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Aye.
There's a motion and there's a second. The items are, A, request board approval of an ordinance amending Section 8-3-22, number of licenses of Article III alcoholic liquors of the Hoffman Estates Municipal Code, increase the number of Class A licenses, 830 North Roselle Road, Inc., Doing Businesses QP, 830 North Roselle Road, Hoffman Estates. B, request board approval of a fiscal year 2018 mid-year financial review and move forward with the following unbudgeted projects. One, fire department large diameter hose. And two, installation of a generator at the Service Center Arena. C, request board approval of a five-year extension to the agreement with Andy Frain of Aurora, Illinois. Four, one, security, ushers, guest services at the Service Center Arena. And two, event parking services at the Service Center Arena. D, request board authorization to extend 2017 contract for 2018 contracted branch brush pickup program to Trees R Us, Inc., Willcond, Illinois, in amount not to exceed $30,000.